The Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards. Every Thursday at six fifteen on the live radio. And Asma Edwards, her county attorney for former city commissioner, sitting in Daytona Beach. The Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards on the live radio.
Five o'clock, perfect, that'll be perfect. I'll probably call you tomorrow anyway, I'm just a creature of habit. You wanna come inside?
Dan, you've been sitting much too long, much too long. Welcome, 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 welcome to Truth, the radio program designed with you in mind. A program whose sole purpose is to empower you, our listeners, by information released and knowledge. And knowledge is, you got it, power. Truly now, if you don't really realize that knowledge is power, start to wonder and ask yourself, why is it that there's so many who try to keep certain knowledge from you? If we're not that all-powerful, believe me, there'd be all kinds of information out there for you to receive, for you to share, so that we can all be on the same wavelength. We can all be at the same level in terms of our knowledge base and be able to come together, work together, get a lot of stuff taken care of. But, you know, that's not in the design, it's not in the plan for man, you know? Man wants us to stay ununited, disunited, disconnected, and not come together in unity. And we all do need to come together. There was a song out many years ago, I always say this in church, and it was called, "What the world needs now is more love." And that could not be closer to the truth today than it was back then. So, welcome, 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 welcome to Truth. And I'm so happy to have you here. I do encourage you, as always, to go to the website at www.gwenhyphentruth.com so you can access that all and powerful, all and powerful, yes it is, links and that links you to the all-powerful information. Information concerning your municipalities, your county agencies, state agencies, federal agencies, and advocacy groups. Go there too, so you can participate in the poll. This is the last week the poll, this poll will be up. And it has to do, of course, with amendment two and whether or not, since so many are saying it will pass, whether or not you have any concern about its negative impact and the possibility of it getting into the wrong hands, especially into the hands of our youth. Of course, it was much more certain that it was going to pass months ago, but as with everything, the closer you get to the lectures, the more negative ads and everything else that comes out, the less possible and plausible is the possibility of something passing, including, you know, certain persons getting elected. And that's unfortunate, because what we should do, when we see things on the air that we aren't quite sure of, before we jump into it and want to believe it, we should check it out. And there are any number of resources that you have available to check any bit of information out. Does that mean that everywhere you check is gonna be truthful or correct? No, but you go to enough places and you're bound to get sufficient information, especially about those issues that are very, very, very important to you. And I know we all wanna make the right decisions, but, you know, sometimes you just have to go with your gut feeling about people and about, you know, issues and especially some of these valid issues that are coming forward. I cannot, and I'm not to tell you how to vote, but I can tell you how I voted and why. And I will tell you that in terms of the constitutional amendments, yes, you should support amendment one. There are vocal people that are in favor of that, one or two are not, just because they don't believe certain things should be in the constitution. But, you know, when you try to allow legislators to take care of stuff and they don't, then you need to put it in a certain location where they can't get their hands to it. And that's what amendment one, constitutional amendment one is about. You already have voted for purchasing lands. You already have that in place, it's not a new tax. All it does is direct where the funds will come from. And in that language, it goes into the constitution. And we do need to start saving more and more of our water and land resources. And that's what amendment one is gonna do. Amendment two on the marijuana thing, I'm not gonna tell you anything in terms of that. My husband and I didn't decide until we got into the election booth. So, you do what you wanna do on that. But I would say on amendment, constitutional amendment three, you should vote no, because it goes contrary to what the Supreme Court decided. It goes contrary to what I think is fairness and the right ethics. And that is that the Supreme Court said that the person that you've elected into office is the one who should get to decide who your judicial, your judiciary should be. And that changes that meaning from what the Supreme Court said, amendment three, to what the legislators wanted to say, which is that someone who's going out of office can appoint some judges, and then the person who's in office doesn't get that right and an opportunity. And I believe that whoever is elected, that's one of the few things they get to do, is appoint people. So allow them to continue to do that. And in terms of Daytona Beach's charter amendments, all I'm gonna say to you is this. The only two that I supported was amendment one, which is a cleanup amendment for those things that have already been changed by the state, basically, and amendment four, which has to do with the citizens initiative. Putting it back into a reasonable amount of percentage of petitions that's required for you, the citizen, to take action. The other stuff is not something that I support. Reducing the amount of citizen involvement on the planning board and, you know, saying that the mayor gets to do what the county council does and making an annual report. They can do that without it being in the constitution. And the auditor position, new position, constitutional position in your charter. That's not needed and necessary either. I agree with the Chamber of Commerce on that. So, there you have it, in terms of that. Now, I want us at this point in time to actually get to know an individual that I've known for several years. If you've been listening to my show over the years, you know that I have had this lady, Joyce Cusay, on my show over the years. She has always been open and willing to come on this show when she was running for office, but also when she was in office, when she was in the House of Representatives. She would take time, every year I would have her on, and she'd come on and she'd share, right Joyce? She'd share information about what's going on in the legislature, or legislation that has been passed, that you need to pay particular attention to, what you need to be informed about. That legislation has passed, you know, in terms of the impact on you. She just always has made herself available to do that. And, you know, I'm very respectful of that. I got the same kind of response from Evelyn Lynn, who was a good friend. You guys worked well together when you were in Tallahassee. And one of the things, I'm gonna say this Joyce, as we get more into this too. One of the things that I respected of you when you were in the House of Representatives, you're one of the few newbies that went up there and got legislation that you wrote yourself, not piggybacked on for somebody else or, you know, tried to get, you know, your name signed to somebody else's bill. But you created your own bill to get something done for the people in our county, and you were successful in getting it done. That was unheard of. So, you know, for those who might have some negativity and they're saying that you don't do this, you don't do that, you can't do this, you've proven, you know? And one of the things, you always say that a promise made, a promise kept. And that is what you did when you were in the Florida House of Representatives. That's what you've done since you've been on the county council. So, and what I want to do is spend some time, you know, talking about your candidacy and your plans, but I want those people who don't know you as well as I know you and some of your friends know you, to get to know you, you know, who you are and what you're about, what you believe. Because you and I, you know, we were raised around the same people and that kind of stuff. My mom knew you for years, I came to know you, and I know you're a person who just has a good heart. And you work hard to make things happen. Now, you know, people can't pay me to say stuff, 'cause everybody knows that I say was on my mind, like my mama. But I know these things to be true. And so, I would say for all of those who wonder who they should support, and I know Pat, I've known Pat for a few years as well, and I like Pat. But I would have to say, you know, looking at my mama and what we're about and everything else, but also because, because you're well-qualified and there's a lot that you can do and have done for the people, so you deserve the right to be re-elected. So, share with the people a little bit about you, for those who may not have heard, you know? And all they've heard maybe is just negativity.
Thank you so much, Gwen. I'm so honored to be here today and to say to you, thanks for being the advocate that you are for the people of Volusia County. You make us proud.
Thank you.
You make east and west Volusia proud. You're a homegrown girl. As you know, I'm a native from Volusia County. I was born in New Savannah and grew up in the land. We moved west. And you know, I was married to my husband Chuck Cusay for forty-eight years. Chuck and I had two, have two beautiful daughters, Jan and Julian. I just believe that to whom much is given, much is required. I have three lovely granddaughters, and I also have an adopted granddaughter. So I have four grandladies, all girls, from a family of girls. I want you to know that I consider it an honor to serve. Because I know that to whom much is given, much is required. And I have had so much given to me by so many people have just been able to help me along the way. I went back to college after being married and having two babies. My husband went back to college and we worked hard to get to where we are today. And so, I just think that I have a responsibility to be of service to the people. And I believe it's important that you be trustworthy and that you keep your word. And what you, your word should be your bond. And if you think that something is right, you should support that. And if you think it's injustice, you should also speak of that injustice. And that's how I have lived. I've lived my life that way, trying to be good, just trying to be good. My husband always used to say, "Just try to do good." And that's what I do. I have no hidden agenda. I could go into the sunset with all ease, read and sit by the beach, listen to the water come in, and just, just ease out that way. But I think that there's still much work to be done. And I want to be a part of that process. I think that you have to realize that when you are gifted and you can do things and have people to listen, and you can be an influence on the children of the world, then you need to do that. And that's what I've tried to do. So, why do I work hard? Well, it's for two reasons. I think that you have, you need to be committed to doing something. Then I think that I have to make sure that my children and my grandchildren understand that hard work pays off, that you are a better person when you can work hard and make a difference in the life of the people. And I want them to see that in their mom and their grandma. And I think that another thing that's important to me is that you have to know that there are people that will say negative things about you just because. And most times, that's because they don't know you. And they've not had the personal contact with you. I have, I see people as people, doesn't matter to me, black, white, doesn't matter. Native Americans, they're all good in my sight, because I judge not. Well, I know someone that would judge us all in that great, great day. But it's just important to try to do good, help people along the way. I was a nurse for Brunswick Corporation, I'm a nurse pharmacist. So, before I went to the legislature, I was a nurse for Brunswick Corporation. I've worked in public health, the public health nurse. I used to go out and do baby, well-baby checks on newborns and teach moms about how to handle your newborn baby. Those were some great times in the homes of many people that I, in Volusia County. So, they wondered why does she keep getting elected? Because I have always been committed to people. And sometimes someone would walk up to me and say, "I remember my mom was sick and you came over just to see what you could do to help us." "My dad died, you came to tell us and talk to us about it, took us home." I asked you, and this young lady says, "I said, 'You want me to start a fire?'" They had a wooden stove. "Oh, that's all right," excuse that, "you don't know anything about wood and stove." I said, "Oh, yes, I do." But people come up and say, you know, "You did this to help me." I don't even remember. But I know that you have to be an instrument of good. And there will always be people that will not like you, but this, the good outweighs the bad every time. So that's a little bit about me and where I am. I was rid by my mom in Deland, a single parent. We grew up poor, had very little, but we were rich and loved. And I was always smart. And my mom always said that you can do anything that you set your mind to do. And so, I'm living proof of that. I've made an impact. I was in the legislature eight years, the first person, freshman, to pass a bill. And the speaker talked about my bill, and his state was a state. That was Tom Feeney. And he says to me, "I talked to someone about him just the other day, wondering how he was doing and what was his life like today." He's doing well. And so, I have many good friends, and everywhere I go, I try to make at least one friend. And so, I had lots of friends in the legislature, lots of friends from high school. So, I just try to make a difference, that's all I do. I'm good, and I just wanna do good.
And you know, there are people who talk about career politicians and the like, but if I recall correctly, when you first ran for office, that really wasn't something you just, you know, first thing popped in your head, "I'm gonna run for office." As I recall, there was a legislator, a local legislator from the Deland Commission who had died, and everybody was wondering, "Well, who are we gonna get to run? Who are we gonna get to run? Who are we gonna get to run?" And as I think about it, I think you initially were a little reluctant.
That's right.
And then you started thinking, you know, "If no one else will do it, then I'll pick up the banner and then I'll go with it."
And that's why I was going to run for the city commission. That's what my goal, maybe I should do that, to make a difference in the city of Deland. And there are folk that says, "You know, I think that you have such a caring spirit that you could do not only represent Deland, but you could represent Volusia County." So, you should, you should think about running for office, for the state legislature. I said, "Who, me?" And this was T. Wayne Bailey. I says, "He says, 'I think that you could make a difference.'" And so, I had a family, we always had family discussions. My husband and my daughters, the guy, any major decision we had, we had a family discussion. So, in that discussion, to make it a long story short, they said, "You know, I think you should go for it." And so, that was the beginning of my career. I was chairman of the Health and Human Services Board.
Yes, yes, I remember.
And so, that was a board that-
I served with you.
That's right, that's right. I believe the government should be from the people up.
Yeah.
And not from Tallahassee down. So that was another influencer on, for me to go to Tallahassee. Was the fact that I felt that government ought to be recognized and implemented and decisions should be made from the people. And you take that message. And so, that was the reason I ran for the legislature.
Now, if you had to decide, I'm sure you've been asked this question, so maybe on the tip of your tongue, since you're in the Florida House, but you came back, you ran for the county, you've served close to, I guess, close to your four years, but what would you say are maybe your one or two most memorable votes on the county council? And if you had anything to do differently, what would that be?
Well, on the county council, I think one of the votes that I took was a vote that meant a lot to me when we made the decision to bring in the evac into the county government. Simply because I believe that it's important that we have a system in place that if it's going to represent county government, then we ought to make sure that we have influence as to how we represent us. And that the delivery of service is the bottom line. So when you're sick and you need help, you need help now. So, I just think that that was a good decision to bring the evac system in-house and not have it outside, outsourced, as it had been in the past.
Right, 'cause it was private, but it was also losing money.
It was losing revenue over and over, and the county was constantly involved in putting more money, more money. And so, sometime, back in your life, sometime when you take your finances in hand, you can handle your money better.
Yes, yes.
Than when you let someone else handle your finances. So, I think that was a good move for us. And I think another thing that we have done, or was a good move, was the fact that emergency dispatch, to bring that into one place so that emergency services can be dispatched to the people in a uniform way. Not just county, but the inner cities. The cities ought to be a part of that. So, when the county took over that system, that meant that the cities would have that funding that they would have, that they were paying for dispatch. They no longer had to pay that, the county took that up. But the most important part of that is the delivery of service. The uniformity of the delivery of service to government and to the people. So, I think those are two really important things that we did that made a difference. And I want to see us do more things to try to, the internship program, I guess that must have been my biggest one. As I think that, I think that it's important that we train up and have young people to buy in, and not so young people, to buy into the operations of county government with internship program. So we have partnered with the five universities in Volusia County to have internship program. So, I would think that that would be one of the, the most outstanding things that we did, was the fact that we are training now folk to become a part of county government in management in different areas, in finances, or in road and bridge, engineering. So it's a wonderful program, and I would encourage any young person or any student in any of the five universities to contact county government to become a part of the internship program.
That is excellent, because one of the things you always hear from politicians is, "We need to get our colleges and universities more involved with government. We need to take advantage of this think tank and all this brain matter that ends up leaving our area." And that's the better way to try to keep them here.
That's right.
Is a time in, you know?
That's right, that's right. The Mike Plauch is a good example. Mike Plauch was a part of the internship program when I was a nurse of Volusia County. And then, for some reason, they stopped that program. And so, he's the city manager now of the city of Deland. So that was a young man that was a part of that program. And why they discontinued the program, I don't know. But since I've been on the council, I wanted to make sure that we started that back again and that we embraced the internship program. And we've done that.
That is excellent, that is excellent. If you think back, and maybe you say there weren't any bad decisions, but anything that you'd do over?
Yes, well, I don't know what I would do different. I can't, maybe before the show ends, I'll just put on my back cap and try to run. There are some things that I would want to do different. I want us to always be partners with city, the city government, that's important. That was my first, we just voted for CRA for Orange City, which was the first CRA that I'd ever had the privilege to be a part of. I was pleased that we bought in-house the emergency management operations. Maybe that might be the lack of partnership with transportation issues with the TPO. That might be one thing that we did do that I had some concerns about with the, with the position we took to bring in a part, you know, they have, in the TPO, you have a long-range planning. And there is a part of funding that you use to determine which of the programs that we want to be a part of that five-year plan, which ones are in the ten-year. And to move one from another, you should, you should not do that because the citizens and the TPO team has a plan of action. And you should leave the plan in place and work the plan that you have planned it. But we didn't do that. We took something that was not in a part of the long-range plan and put it in the plan and pretty much moved it up to the top.
Oh, wow.
So, I voted for that. If I had that to do over again, I would not do that. I would think that the process is such, is already in place as to how we should do that. And I don't think we should circumvent that. Because someone else says that this is a good deal and we have provided the source and you can be a partner with me. And so, we will vote, as every other council member voted for. If I had it to do, I think I probably would have voted yes.
Yes, yes, and I follow your reasoning on that, because I've been a part of that group before it was called the TPO, but I believe, but it is an intricate planning process that you go through, and everybody has an opportunity to throw something on the table.
That's right.
And by the time you've done that plan, especially, you know, with transportation, I mean, dollars, the dollars are drying up.
That's right, that's right.
And so, it's very, very-
I'd like for you to say that you would put in X number of dollars for a road project, and then all of a sudden, because you have the money to put in for that project, we go with what you say.
Uh-huh, and kick everybody else to the curb.
And so, that would be, that would be something that I would, I would take note of that in the future as to how we remove projects that are not a part of the plan.
Okay. Now, in terms of economic development, and we all wanna see a lot of jobs come to the area, especially good-paying jobs. How do you feel as you see what is happening now and as you take out your crystal ball? Everybody wants you to have a crystal ball and then look in the future. Do you see things just getting better and better, 'cause it seems that it will?
I think so. I think that we're on the right track. I think that we will see Volusia County in its heyday. And I think that it's important that we set the plan in action and be good stewards of the tax dollar. And know that we have some great opportunities. We need to make sure that we do those things, that make sure the infrastructure is in place, the development, that we will look closely at what we have and how we can make it better. And so, we don't lose those businesses as we think about increasing, but keep, maintain what we have. And then move into, into the arena where we can do better things that provide opportunities and give incentives to help with those opportunities so that we might be able to grow. I believe that we will grow and that we will partner with the universities around, we will partner with the incubators to make sure that we have job opportunities, we'll be good stewards as it relates to development in our areas. And I think that we are moving in the right direction, and I, and I wanna be a part of that. And I want to continue to be an anchor, if you will, on that county council, that we look at all issues. And if it's a good issue, if it's something that will benefit the citizens of Volusia County, I'm on board. But I don't think that we can afford to stagnate. We must stagnate. We must continue to move and keep our eyes open, look at all of our resources. Look at the airport, make sure that we're utilizing all of those. Team Volusia, I think that's a good organization, and we have to buy into and make sure that we do what we can to bring and attract businesses to our area. And that's what I want to do, that's what I want to continue to do.
And I heard you say initially, as you were getting started too, that you recognize- And I heard you uh say initially as you were getting started too, that you recognize that there are small businesses that are currently here that need to help too. So you wanna keep.
I wanna keep them on board and keep working with them. I want them to to know that they are not overlooked, that we are here to encourage and to be a part of their network. So that they can grow and and become and maintain their stability in our community. That's very important. And so uh that's that's what I want to do. But I I think that it's important that we become partners with the business community. And I said before, it's kinda like the county council to me should be like the quarterback of a football team. And the lineman, which be uh the different resources that's available to us, the backfield of the businesses that are coming up. And the ones that are there, the stability that we can provide by working together.
Mm-hmm.
I think that we are on to something.
Hmm.
And and I'm willing to to move forward.
Yes, and like the quarterback, you you pass the ball to those that that's needed.
That needed.
And can bring it forward.
And and you can articulate.
Everybody's part of the team.
Part of the team.
Yeah.
That's what that's about.
Mm-hmm.
And and that's what I want to see happen to us as as a county. And 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 that, and that doesn't mean just the the outer circle, but the inner circle, all the part of the team.
Mm-hmm.
And all we do as as members of the county council is to make sure that we got the game plan. And willing to work with the team to make it happen.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all, and that's all of us working together. And and I think we are, we can do this, we can do this. And I, as far as an agenda for for Joyce, I just want to try to do good, stay busy, helps me uh to to stay busy. And 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 I do useful service to my community.
Right, right.
Cuz this community has nurtured me and my family all my life. And so to whom much is given, as I said, much is with what I have to give back, and that's what I do.
And, you know, not to get specifically into that that uh thing about the ventures, but in terms of campaign finance. Um because I know that that uh just like legal women voters has been fighting to to maintain um really as much ethics in terms of campaign finances, they could, and I know you you've joined in that over the years yourself.
Good.
Uh but a lot of times, people who don't campaign, who aren't candidates, don't understand that, you know, even though you can watch every dollar, there still could be somebody or something that slips in there. And if you haven't heard anything negative and it's not negative on the radar, you know, how would you know?
How would you know? I I don't know. All I do is try to look at every issue. Always check my reports. And I try as best I can to always maintain the integrity of the system. Because I have always pride on the fact that I am a person of high integrity. And and I take issue when people question my integrity. Because I I'm I'm good, I try to do the right thing, I check my financial reports. And I don't have the big contributions that many, of my contributions are five dollars, fifty dollars. So it's amazing to me how one company can provide nineteen thousand dollars to a campaign, you see? So what's that about? Why would it be necessary? I, what I would really love to see is that they would not have any campaign contributions. Just take that part out. And you would have to run on your own issue.
Right.
Wouldn't that be a great thing?
Yes, it would.
Just run on your own issue. Don't have money to slander and to talk about folk. Don't have to have signs that people can pull up out of the yard. Just go to town hall meetings and go to churches and different places and talk to people. Have them to to watch and be a part of the process. And judge you based on you.
Mm-hmm.
And not what someone wants to say negative about you. I think that our system of government would be so much better if we did that.
Yes, it would.
And and you would have to, don't talk about what I have done, talk about what you will do.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's what we need to do. We need to forget about, look at the money that we, just in this governor's race, for instance. Look at the money we have spent in negative campaigning. How many homeless people were that house?
Yes, yes.
How how much, how many babies cannot provide healthcare for?
And even elderly.
And elderly, that we could do meals on wheels, how much more could we do with that if we had that kind of money?
Right, right.
So I think it's misappropriation of funds as to how we, because of the negativity that is embraced in in political campaign. It makes good people not wanna run for office.
Mm-hmm.
That's what it does. It discourages good people from running for public office.
Mm-hmm.
And so you need, we need to get away from this and just go right back to what we used to have as town hall meetings. And you talk about the issues and what you would like to see as your vision. And be uh and say what you mean and mean what you say. And take the money out of this. See, probably not in my lifetime when we see that. Because for it's, you know, money is the root of the, the love of money.
Mm-hmm.
My husband used to always say, it's not money that's the root of evil, it's the love of money that's the root of evil. So it's important that we understand that. And that's why I think that hopefully one day we could get away from that.
Mm-hmm.
And use those dollars in good things to help the community grow.
Well, I agree with you, I agree with that. It seems that the the less um baggage somebody has that they can pin on you, the more negative they become, then they start to personalize it.
That's right.
Uh they can't get you on your, gig you on your issues or or, you know, your your good standing, so then they just try to ruin your name.
They just try to ruin your name.
Mm-hmm. And and hopefully, you know, voters are wiser than that, um.
I hope so, I hope they are wise enough to know that you have to look beyond the surface. When you think, when a person find it necessary to be negative in a campaign. You have to remember, what is the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Why is it that you have to attack someone in order to build yourself up? That that is morally, I think that that is something that we ought to look at.
Yes.
I do not vote for people who run negative campaign.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's just not the way that I think we ought to have our government run. Uh just be truthful, tell what you would do.
Mm-hmm.
Keep your word, what you say, mean what you say. And make the promises that you will try to keep and keep those promises.
Mm-hmm.
And let the people decide. Government is supposed to be for the people and by the people.
Yes, yes.
So whatever happens to that, that money by elections.
Yes, uh and it's, it it truly is a sad day in government and in in America when when that happens.
When that happens.
Let me quickly say, you're listening to Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards. My guest is uh incumbent um county council at large, uh Joyce Cusack. And uh she's also a candidate running for reelection for that uh same seat. This is WLE thirteen eighty AM on your radio dial in Ormond Beach, Florida, also BIG thirteen eighty AM, Goliath Radio, uh in Ormond Beach, Florida. And we're happy to have you with us. And um we're we're giving you an opportunity to get to know the Joyce Cusack that I know and that so many uh individuals know as well. Um and I I know the one other area where people try to gig you has to do with the appointment that was made. Um and and I'm gonna say this about that, and if you wanna say anything, you can. But um my question has always been, um you know, where where was the county staff? Uh because uh individuals who serve in office, um they can come up with names, they can say, you know, let's go with this one, that one, or whatever. But there should be somebody who's actually uh checking on uh the individuals or they know something negative, they should be bringing that forward. And um I am like you, I believe in giving a person a second chance. Uh if there's something about them that makes it maybe send the wrong message, then I'll think twice about it. Uh but, you know, you you, uh in terms of appointment of the guy who our police chief had an issue with, um that name was vetted forward. Um uh what could be done was done. Apparently, he contributed while he was there, serving, and uh.
He's still there. Uh he's still there. He has one vote on that committee. Now, it's important that we understand that hotelers on Ridgewood collect bed taxes too.
Mm-hmm.
So is it fair not to have representation on that, on that board?
Mm-hmm.
And they had never had a person on the board. So did I know that there was many calls to his hotel? He's, he has never had anything in his history as a person, as a hoteler. But he's a small business owner who owns a hotel. His credentials and his resume that was submitted, that I looked at, I talked to him.
Mm-hmm.
Did I go and pull the police record as to how many times somebody had been to his, uh that he had called uh for uh the police to come? No, I did not do that. But I've never done that to any appointments I've ever.
Yeah, that would not.
And 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 why would I screen them out because of that? So to say that, and then the members of the council also.
Mm-hmm.
Get that same resume that I have. And has the flexibility to look at that and to question that.
Mm-hmm.
And he passed, you, I made, I nominated him. He passed unanimously by the council.
Hmm.
And that's who will make the appointment. I nominated, the council makes the appointment. So if there was something in his history that was bad, that they did not, that he should not be appointed, even though he had to collect taxes, then someone should have said something about that. No one said anything about that. And then the second time I appointed him, the man cleaning up his his business, he's he's calling. And he's finding someone that doesn't look the part to come. So he has to discriminate now as to who you can tell, I might have walked to his door for him. So what, does he have to give me a room? So you, it's a thin line.
Mm-hmm.
That you have to cross. Does, does this same thing happen on A one eight? You bet it does. But that's not our responsibility or charge to do that. Or it's the police, I protect that you would want the police to come.
Mm-hmm.
If you, if there's something that's going on in your hotel and you uh need to have the protection of having the police to come for your other guests and for you.
Right, right.
So this guy's resume was was not a problem with it. So to come up, Pat Patterson, you see, all of them on the council who was there for the second time that he was appointed. They said that he has too much riffraff there. So he voted against it.
And that's cuz his business is on the same street.
It's bad, his business is right three or four doors down. So he voted against it.
So he probably had someone knocking on his door as well.
That's right. So that was, and he was young when. So to do and to say that, all of this, and vote for, that doesn't sound to me like you've been sincere. And if it was something, and I don't say that, I think that when I get an application, it should have already been done.
Yes, right, right.
You know, if this is something that we should not have been able to even see. But this man who presented the application, his application, it was approved by the the screening, which is the cop or the uh the staff.
Right.
And it was them presented to us. I did look and check his uh the application. I did have a put a conversation, did I go to his hotel? No, I did not go to his hotel. Do I go to the hotels or any other appointments I've had? No. And I would venture to say, I asked at the desk, uh at our last meeting, we made an appointment. And I asked Mr. Davis, now, did you go and have a personal interview with this man before you appointed him, you're making the appointment? He said, I registered the application.
Yes, as you had.
Just as I had done.
Uh-huh.
You see, so.
Except you went further, you did call and.
That's right, and had a conversation with him. And why did he want to serve? Because he wanted to make sure that we had some representation. He wanted to be a part of the process and he wanted to try to better the the hotelers on Ridgewood Avenue. So he had every indication to me that it was a good appointment.
Mm-hmm.
If it was not, he has not done anything that uh that I would say that has caused him to have any charges brought against him as a hotel. So that's the story of that. But if you're looking for something, to try desperate people, do desperate things.
Yes, yes.
And that's what happens when you do desperate things. And that, and that's, that's where I am, and I think that it's the right thing to do. And I, the fa, the process was completely followed, and I, and I stand by that.
Mm-hmm. And, you know, for for people, because I know, and I'm getting to another area now, in terms of availability. Uh you show up at a lot of events, you get a lot of invitations. Uh you're one of two positions on the county council that's uh elected countywide.
That's right.
And so you get invitations from all over the county, just as the county chair does.
That's right.
And you probably get more invitations, to be quite frank. Uh but I know that uh there are a lot of things that you you go to. And and what people should understand is that when you get a lot of invitation, you can't stay the whole time at a lot of these things. But I know many times you do.
Yes, right.
Uh and, you know, that's to your credit as well, that you make yourself available, that you're accessible. And uh and as you've said, you you know, growing up in the area, uh being born on the south end and then, uh you know, and then going to school, working and selling on the west end and, you know, representing also the east end because you're over here a lot. There are a lot of people over here who know you as well and who work with you. So you've really been all around the county, and I think that's, that's to your credit as well. Um for for uh in terms of of individuals um who work for office, sometimes, many times what they, what they think about um is the legacy that they will leave behind and how it is that they want people to remember them. And um our prayer is that you get elected, uh but there are things, as you've said, you still want to get finished, there's still much work to do. Uh but how would you like to be remembered by your constituency? And um and I know in terms of your family, your hard work and everything else, cuz we were raised the same way with some of the same standards and advantages, you know. Uh but um how would you like your constituents to remember you or to even see you, see you?
Uh well, I'd like them to see me as someone that is approachable, that has no respect for person. Everybody is important to Joyce Cusack. Whether you gave me five thousand dollars, five dollars. I want to be remembered in this arena as an honest person who tried very hard to make a difference in the quality of life of all of the citizens in Volusia County and the state of Florida. I, I just want people to remember, you know, she was a good person, she helped me and my my parents. And so that's that's all, that's all I I want. I want someone to be able to tell my granddaughters, oh, I remember your grandma.
Mm-hmm.
She 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 was friends with my mom, you know. I want them to be able to say that. Uh my my grandma taught me how to read, and and we always had craft uh on our way to school with my grandma. Those are the things that are important to me. My grandma can make the best sweet potato pie. And I want people to say, you know, Ms. Ms. Cusack always took my calls. And even to this day, folk come to my door, well, Ms. Cusack, I know you're busy, but I want, I have this problem.
Mm-hmm.
And I always try to make people feel comfortable in my presence. I can, I can die in the kings, but I never lose my common touch.
Mm-hmm.
I still know how to put a fire in a wood stove.
Mm-hmm.
I still know how how to iron and take my garbage out. I'm just an ordinary citizen who has tried to make extraordinary good decisions about life and people. That's how I want to be remembered.
Mm-hmm. Uh for people who may ask the question as well, okay, you've you've had the eight years in the state. years in the state legislature, House of Representatives, you've had the four years at the county level, um, why run again?
Well, I think that, two reasons. One is that I'm selfish inasmuch as I like people, I like the activity, I like to have to dress to go to work, uh, and I can do that, uh, that's one reason. Because I, and I like to talk, and I like people. And the second reason I, I, I'm running is because there are things that I, I can do and will continue to do to try to improve our system of government. I've never been in a position in government where we had a budget that was sufficient for all of the needs of the citizens. I would like to be able to be a part of the process to make sure that we have distribution of dollars so that we can make a difference in all of our attempts at trying to better things in Belushi County. That's the reason I want to continue to do it. Just because I, I am selfish and wanna be around people, like doing what I do, and also because I want to make a significant contribution as it relates to government and managing, and managing government affairs.
And, um, I, I recently, we were at the Dunkelman University where they had a candidate's forum, and I made mention of the fact that I was elected into an office where there was, had not been an African American before, or a female. And, um, and, you know, less than ten percent of the populace, uh, the electorate that voted, uh, was of, of people of color. And, uh, and you stated you had a similar circumstance in terms of, of the, um, you know, the makeup of the people who had actually voted you in the office.
That's right. You know, I've made, I was the first many times, I was one of, I was the first nurse in industry, a registered nurse, working industry, uh, and that was at Runge Corporation. I was the first nurse to work for county government. And that was giving the shots at, in Belushi County. I was the first person of color and a female to, from Belushi County to be in the Florida House of Representatives. First person in Belushi County, a, a woman and a woman of color to be the leader pro temp in the Florida Legislature in the Democratic House side. And I was, I was the first person in Belushi County to run countywide on the Belushi County Council. And so, I've been the first a lot of times. So there were officers that would come along to, to stand on my shoulders. Uh, the ceiling has been broken, as Nancy Pelosi had said, the ceiling has been broken in Belushi County, that every person has an opportunity to do well and to exceed if given an opportunity. Many of us are capable of serving, but only a few of us are given the opportunity to serve. And so, I, I'm grateful to the people of Belushi County for, for many things. I had never represented a minority district. It was not people of color that sent me to the legislature. Because this too was, Belushi County, less than twelve percent, I remember, legislature. And so, I was also one of the first people to sit at the lunchroom county demonstration and the center of the land to have a coke at Moore, of course. And that same city was a part of sending me to the Florida Legislature. So I've been the first in many ways. And, uh, I just think that I want a, one day I will write a book about the things that I have been first, but I, I, I don't have time right now, I'm too busy trying to complete that story. That, but, four more years, I think I would be ready to do that, to sit and, and begin to talk about the things that have happened to me along this way. And, uh, why was it important for me to see those students yesterday to, to march across that bridge? See, I remember the time folk did not have the opportunity to do the time of that. So there are many things that needs to be said and, and we need to continue to do to make life better. That we are, we don't, doesn't matter how we got here, but right now, we're all here.
Amen.
And so we just have to work with what we got. And, and make the difference as a, as a family and as a team, a part of that football, of us.
I, I agree with you, and like yourself, I've had a lot of firsts in, in my life too. Um, I am, um, I really think there are a lot of people who, I know there are a lot of people already helping you and your campaign and the like, but for anyone who wants other answers or, or, uh, ask other questions, et cetera, get more information, uh, what is your website?
My website is reelectjoicusack.com. Reelectjoicusack.com. And my phone number is area code three eight six seven three four nine five one seven. And I answer that phone.
Okay, awesome. I know in every election that you've always made yourself available and accessible, and, uh, when you're running and when you're in office, uh, that is the case. I, I can remember having you on the show when you were talking about people come to your back door, because you said the same thing then, that they still come to your back door, knock on the door, you invite them in, you know?
Come on in.
Yeah, but you know, that's how we were raised, you know?
That's how you...
And to always do your best because, you know, not only did your family expect it, but God expects it.
They say, it's a, do your best, my granddaughter told me this, do your best, be mine, and God will do the rest.
Oh, yes.
I have the house of eight, never lose one. Do your best, Grandma, and God will do the rest. Do your best, always win, and God will do the rest.
Oh, I believe it, I believe it. Hallelujah. Uh, as we go off the air, uh, any closing comments you'd like to make?
I just have to say to you, thank you so much for, for allowing me to come and have this conversation with you. Thanks to the citizens in Belushi County for having given me the opportunity to represent you in Florida Legislature and I'm term on the county council. I look forward to representing you for four more years as a member of the Belushi County Council. So, vote early. Uh, the polls are open, uh, from seven AM to seven PM until, uh, Saturday of this week. So, you got time to go. And if you can't get there, then go to, on November fourth, to your precinct and vote. Vote because it's a democracy, it's the right thing to do. And if you don't vote, then you should not complain. Make your voice be being known. Thank you so much for having given me the opportunity to serve, and I look forward to meeting many of you as we travel around this county in the future. Uh, God bless you all, thank you.
And God bless you as well and to all of our listeners, and shout out to all those who have already voted, uh, shout out to those who do plan to vote. And, uh, shout out to DCU and all the universities and colleges who are ensuring that our young people are also involved in, in voting. Um, just shout out to everyone and anyone within the sound of my voice, and hopefully those that are not listening, uh, you can pass this on to them because, uh, as I said to the young people at DCU, uh, they've heard the comment that a mind is a terrible thing to waste, but a vote is a terrible thing to waste as well. Too many people have died to give all of us this opportunity, not just African Americans, but women also, uh, did not have this right to vote, uh, for that many years. So, let's, uh, let's be appreciative of the privilege and the opportunity that we have, and please, 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 if you are registered, please, please vote. Um, it would be a terrible thing to waste, it would be a terrible thing to not take advantage of, because your vote is not only, um, uh, something that helps you now, but it's your investment in your future as well. So please vote. Well, thank you all for listening. Uh, be sure to join us every Thursday at around six twenty as we discuss issues to inform and empower y'all listeners. Go to the website, www.wenhatertooth.com. Until next time, be informed, be empowered, and stand tall for that which is right and truthful. Again, this is Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards. My guest, uh, Joyce Cusack, candidate for reelection for the, uh, county council at large seat, and, uh, I'm sure she wants and expects your vote. Uh, so again, uh, this is Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards, and like you, like, uh, Joyce Cusack, Councilwoman Joyce Cusack, like myself, we're still standing. You guys be, uh, blessed and have a great week. And for Halloween, be sure to be safe and make sure your children are safe as well. God bless, until next time.
That was wonderful, I enjoyed that too. That was great, I enjoyed it so much. Great job, that was good.